I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bexley Board of Education for November 19th, 2019. And I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, if you're here for public comment, we'd like for you to sign in at the sheet at the podium. With that said, Mr. Smith, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Mr. Dennison.
Here.
Ms. LaPla.
Here.
Ms. Miniham.
Here.
And Ms. Snowden is on her way, so. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our, from the board meeting from October 19th, 2019. Do I have any, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions, revisions, changes that need to be made to those minutes? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes from October 21st, 2019, not October 19th. October 21st, 2019 minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed? Thank you. We actually have some special recognition this evening. And it's more on behalf of the board. Normally, Dr. Miller has special recognition. But we'd like to recognize the Bexley Excellence, the Campaign Committee. So, anyone that is here from the committee, if you could please stand up for me, please. Of course, I had a little, I had a little thing that I had written out, but I wanted to, on behalf of the board, thank you for all of your work, and Mr. Cahill, and all of, all of you that are here, and the rest of the committee, and all the hours and time spent away from your family, on behalf of the students of the district. This is for us, this is for the parents, this is for the kids in our community, or students in our community. And for the time and the effort and the willingness to put your neck out there and to spend the time and the effort to be out there, it's amazing how much time that was put in by everybody, and the volunteers, and the money, and everything else that went into this, and the expertise in making sure that we had such an, not only an excellent turnout, but a 68% approval of our, of our levy. So, just, we wanted to make sure that, and if you could pass it along to the rest of the committee, thank you so much. I know that being out and seeing at the polls, at someone at different precincts, standing out there with the signs to make sure that we were supporting all the way up until the polls close, and to hear and to see those results come in at City Hall that evening, where it was just amazing. So, again, thank you so much, on behalf of the board, for all of your efforts and the time that you spent doing this. And with that said, I don't know if anybody else on the board had anything else to say, but I wanted to make sure that, that you were here to be recognized for that. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that said, Dr. Miller?
Thank you. I too wanted to say thank you to our entire community, to the Campaign Committee, the Board of Education, the administrative team, our teachers, who worked so tirelessly, I know lots of Saturdays going door to door, so thank you. Our, all of our staff, our students, and especially, I'm going to thank my partner Kyle. If we now can finish each other's sentences as we talk. But it really is an amazing result when 68% of people say yes, continue to do the work that you're doing. So, thank you to everybody who made this possible. And in reality, it's because of what our staff members do every single day for, for students. It's not what happens in three months, it's what happens every single day that makes people in Bexley want to be in Bexley and to support our schools. So, I just want to especially thank the staff members who come every single day for what they do, and for everyone in the community. Couple of items, well, one, also Joanna, our student representative, is unfortunately home under the weather tonight, so she sent me her report, which was that Homecoming was a huge success. So, good news, good news there. I, I don't have the numbers, but I do believe that she told me they had record attendance. I don't know if any of the teachers in the audience might know that, but I heard that maybe there was record attendance at, at Homecoming, so great news. A couple of items on the agenda that I wanted to highlight. You'll notice in stipends, there are some building instructional leaders at the high school. This information was in a previous Friday report. You'll recall that when we decided to move forward with instructional coaches, we repurposed all of the funds that we had been using for teacher leaders in order to support that, that transition to coaches. Ms. Robbins came to, to me and said, "I really value the work that those teacher leader positions fulfilled at the high school level." She asked Mr. Smith and I if she would be able to use some of her building funds to continue to support that work. And we, of course, said, "Yes, this is no additional cost to the general fund. The money was already allocated to the buildings, and the principals have discretion in how to use those funds." And so, that's what this is, is the, the, what was a teacher leader position. Also, you'll notice a couple of extended field trips, and Ms. Flosser is here, which is nice. Women's Corral will be going to Indianapolis in May, and Vocal Ensemble to Washington DC and Philadelphia in June. And they will, in either case, not miss any school. And so, that's, that's, those are both exciting trips, I know, for the students. So, looking forward to them being able to participate there. And then also, you'll notice a number of policies. These are all for second reading, and no one on the policy committee had any feedback additional, so those are there for, for second reading and approval. And that's all I have.
Just if, does anybody have any questions from Ms. Flosser while she's here? So she can, so she doesn't have to stay on the field trips?
I can stay for a bit.
Okay. We've gotten much better. You won't be here till 1:00 in the morning. So, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Before we get to Mr. Smith, we have special recognition for the Bexley Excellence, but I also wanted to thank my fellow board members for the time and the effort of being out there and advocating for our students as well, and especially for Dr. Miller and, and Mr. Smith. How many meetings was it? Forty?
Five.
Forty? But who's counting, right?
But who's counting?
Dr. Miller and, and Mr. Smith putting together presentations in people's homes, at the theater, at Starbucks, making themselves available. So, not to drag it out, but on behalf of the board as well, for Dr. Miller and Mr. Smith, thank you so much for all of the efforts and the information that was put out. And the rest of the administration, because this was a, this was a team effort as well. I know even with the website and with Tyler, with the information he was putting out in the videos and the information that, that we were providing to people to make an informed decision, I'm glad that they, that, I believe they made the right decision in voting for the levy. But again, I wanted to make sure that Dr. Miller and Mr. Smith are recognized as well, so thank you. I'm Mr. Smith, with that said.
So I guess it's my turn to say thanks, or? I know it may not be appropriate to say, you know, but. No, I'd, I'd like to say special thanks to, to the committee as well. I think they did a fabulous job. Being with Kim a lot was, was great. But I think at the end of the day, what, what we saw on election night, I think just confirmed, Kim and I's reason of why we love this community, and why we both sought out Bexley as a, as a place of employment, but also just a, just a family. And I think that those results represented that, and confirmed our beliefs again. But thank you for your support to the Board of Education. It was a long few months, and I was telling Mike just before we started, I don't know what I remembered that I did in my free time six months ago, so I just don't adjust. It was, it was a hard work and good to see rewarded. Poor our students, at the end of the day, poor our students. Before I turn to the five-year forecast, I want to touch on a couple things on the agenda. One, transfers, we usually see that in October, but I believe probably right to change in November in tune with the five-year forecast. A transfer into the Food Service Fund, like many other districts, our Food Service Department does not, is not really self-sufficient. They don't do too bad, they've improved over the last few years with fewer general fund transfers into it. But we make a one-time transfer now, and then we make another one-time transfer at the end of the year to get them through the summer months when they're not collecting revenue. The other transfer is $25,000 into a PI fund that's specific for the replacement of the turf. Revenue is generated from a general fund transfer of $25,000, which was an offset of expenditures when we had grass turf. So, we spent maintenance hours on grass, painting lines. At the time, the board said, "Let's, let's transfer general fund money into a fund to kind of help build a balance for a replacement." And then we also get cell phone tower revenue from the towers back by the football stadium as well. We no longer have a transfer into athletics because of the athletic fee changes for this year, so we don't see that anymore. So, and I will touch on the monthly financials, because that's really all going to change after we approve tonight's forecast. The monthly variances will pretty much be evened out, because I'll, I'll readjust the, our budget monthly financials once we approve this tonight, if you should approve it. But now I'll talk about the forecast briefly. Updates from the last time we had the forecast in April 2019, a few big updates. The filing dates changed to November 30th now, used to be October 31st. We've updated FY '19 actual numbers. We've updated personnel and benefit expenditure projections with, with this year's and the future years. I'll talk about that in more detail later. This includes the passage of issue six, our nine-mil operating levy, you'll see how that's impacted us. Updated income tax projections. One good thing about changing to November 30th is we get another month of data on the, or another payment for our income tax, so now we have half of our number of payments, but the majority of our dollars for this fiscal year in income taxes. And we've also have an updated funding. But the bottom line is we have a positive cash balance through the forecast to ending fiscal year 2024. But as we expected, even when we were on the levy trail, our expenditures still are, are expected to exceed our revenues. These next two years are not too bad, and then when you enter years three, four, and five, one, it becomes harder to project, but also you see larger deficits on a year-to-year basis. So, this is the, the shrunken down version of what you see in the, in the forecast official document, but the major lines, total revenue, total expenditures. What I've highlighted in blue is our excess of revenues over expenditures. So, we're projected to have a deficit spending, even with this levy, and updated income tax numbers of about $865,000. Next year's $520,000, and you may ask why, why that's a little bit lower, but we're not getting a full year's collection on the new levy this year. We're getting about 58% of the $5 million this fiscal year, which is June 30th end. So, next year, we'll get that full $5 million collection. So, that's why you see that deficit spend a little bit less in fiscal year 2021. Then you can see additional expenditures over revenue the final three years. So, in the green, you can see our cash balance. We're projected to be at $17 million this year, but most likely when we would need to come back for another levy, which I really don't want to talk about right now. We're looking at the fall of 2022, or possibly the spring of '23, that, all right, sorry, the spring of 2022, but effective for the fiscal year 2023.
So, tell me that one more time, sorry.
As of this forecast, we could potentially be on the ballot again in the fall of 2022, for a fiscal year of 2023, which is consistent from what we were saying the last four months, yes.
Fall of 2020.
Yep.
I mean, I know that's not set in stone, I just wanted to make sure I had it in my head.
That was a big discussion of why we were off nine years, maybe we need to get back on a three-year cycle. That's one of the reasons nine mils was selected, because if we needed, if we wanted to go longer than three years, we would have needed to ask for nine, so, or more than nine.
More than nine, right. I'm really just checking to see if I'll still be on the board.
So, I apologize for some of the small numbers, but this graph should look familiar if you followed us on the levy trail or followed some of our presentations. On the left is what the five-year forecast looked like when you graphed out revenues, which are in blue, expenditures which are in red, and black is the cash balance. You can see not much different in the red, even though the red may become a little bit more steeper because of certain trends that we're seeing in expenditures, but not, overall, not a big change in expenditures. But you see, the blue line has adjusted to show that stair step, as I call, on the levy cycle. The blue is like a stair step when you come with levies. So, there's that stair step on the right side, I'm looking at the right side now. And then the black line is our cash balance, which again, we said, we'd not, we would not have a surplus with this levy. We would come really close to breaking even, still a little bit of deficit spending, but I think, and I did not include the last year of the forecast in this on the far right, I just wanted to use the same years. But you can see that we, we will have cash at the end of the forecast, which is a good thing. Which is what the state wants to see as well. Focusing in more on the income tax. This is just the October revenue line. The green is the employer payments, so payroll taxes. You can see that that has increased steadily, but not, maybe modestly. The red is the individual quarterly payments. So, these you could probably say are from individuals who don't have payroll taxes, that might have more income that they have to file quarterly with the federal and state government. The blue is the individual tax returns, and the yellow gold is the refunds. So, I'll, I'll remind you that October 2016 was the high year where we had $8.1 million in revenue. We'll see something here in just a second that compares us to that year. But I wanted to point out, that year was a year of high collections in income tax. So, payroll taxes have increased, the individual quarterly has, has rebounded, and the individual has seen steady modest growth. When you look at this cumulatively, the bold red line is the income tax collection year-to-date for July and October. It overlays the 2017 year, overlapping, overlapping it, and again, which was that $8.1 million. We didn't know this in April, when we filed our most recent forecast before. I will tell you the January and April payments of this year, this calendar year, were the lowest that we've seen in years. I've got another slide that specifically says the years. So, it, it can be a little concerning, because we, we had the 2017 numbers of 8.1, and could we see low years again, like we've, we've seen the last two of 6.8? So, that's something we'll have to watch. January is typically our lowest collection month, so we'll, we'll know more come our February board meeting. So, just to highlight the major assumptions within the 18-page document forecast. I've talked about the income tax collections. It substantially impacts that bottom line. We're estimating $7.6 million this year, again, using year-to-date numbers, and then using our lowest collections for January and April. I believe this could be a possible shift in timing of payments, because when we, when we sat down and I looked at our July data for income tax, it felt like, or it looked like there was some catch-up because January and April were lower. So, if January and April are low again, this could just be a shift of when payments are coming in. We'll, we'll know more.
Is that payments from, sorry, is that payments that we're receiving, or that payments that taxpayers and employers are paying? The timing of that?
The employer payments are more steady, it's more of the quarterly and individual filers.
Okay. So, that's, that's more based upon when, when individuals are, when taxpayers are filing us opposed to when we're getting our payments?
It, it could be, yes, that's what it kind of looks like.
Okay.
Again, the state doesn't release the adjusted gross income for the district until three years later.
Oh, okay.
I think it's after once all the refunds are processed, because we experienced that, but no. So, we won't, we won't know really for another few years if, if it was timing, or if it was something else.
Okay. Thank you.
If you go back one more, please. Forward. There we go. Staffing increases, again, 80% of our expenditures are staffing, so I think it's important to point out. Staffing increases for FY '21, so next year, we'll have three, projected to have three, two, two, and one. And those are spread out between teachers, et cetera. So, it's not just all teachers, but it could be something else. But it's primarily due to student needs and our potential growth that we've been seeing as a trend. Insurance increases, again, part of that 80% of our budget, forecasting 8% for fiscal years '21 and '23, sandwiched in between that, I put a 10% increase for fiscal year '22. That's probably where the trend is in education. And then also, I'll point out, flat funding from the state. So, the state finalized the budget on July 17th, helped school districts flat, saying, "You got what you got last year." And so, there's really no formula, per se, anymore, unless you want to look at last year's formula. But we were, we were a cap district, so we probably weren't going to get any more money anyway. But we are getting additional dollars because of our enrollment growth. We're one of the few districts within the state that is seeing a little bit of an increase. So, I, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it's more than $100,000, less than $200,000. So, of a $40 million budget, that's kind of a drop in the bucket, but we'll take what we can get due to enrollment growth that we've seen for previous years. And finally, one thing that the Government Finance Officials Association, nationwide organization of finance officials recommends that government entities have a 60-day cash balance on hand. I would recommend that we have more because of our income tax. But you can see where we are at the end of each fiscal year, estimated to have $150,000 this year, coming off $168,000 at the end of this past year. But again, still having a positive cash balance at the end of the forecast. Any questions?
Thank you, that was very thorough.
I think it's, it, it made it a pleasure to finish it up after Tuesday, a couple weeks ago, but was ready to finalize it after the, the levy results, and looks better.
Well, I just have one point of clarification, though. I know in the, for fiscal year this year, in your numbers, revenue, you said you only had 58% of the levy, because that's all, it's, actually, we do collect the whole year this year, but because we're on a fiscal year, reporting our fiscal year ends at the end of July, so that's why it only shows part of the year, even though we do collect the entire year for 2020.
Yeah, the taxes that we pay on property are based on a calendar year.
Right.
Our, our fiscal year straddles that.
Yes.
Our trend shows that we collect 58% of that revenue in the first half of the year, and then 42% the second half, meaning taxpayers pay more that first half, and it could be someone who's paying their entire year while others aren't, or your mortgage company.
And just to, you said this, but just to kind of highlight the point, you have built-in the staffing increases, but those aren't necessarily, like, for teachers, it could be mental health supports, any sort of.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any sort of needs we have with the growing population and other needs we have.
Yeah, and as we've done in the last several years, needs may exceed that forecast. It's just a, it's a forecast projection, prediction. This past year, we hired more than two, which I think may have been the forecast a year ago.
Yeah, and I know Dr. Miller's looking at, and she's, she's talked to us about that.
Yep.
And Friday reports and stuff, that that's something that's on the docket, to look at how to spend that money wisely. But I just wanted to, I think it's difficult. Sometimes when people see staffing increases and just an allowance for a number, you think, oh, well, they're going to get three teachers in, in, in year '21. It's not necessarily the case it'll be three teachers. It may be spread up in all sorts of different forms.
Correct. I think the, the discussion that Dr. Miller and I have, have been having, if it comes to staffing, we, I think one of her first questions is, "Kyle, was this in the forecast? Did we plan for this?" She doesn't have it memorized that we've had, we have three on the forecast. That's how we've operated recently. So, I, I think it's important for you to know, so if, if you do see staffing come to you, we can easily say, "Yes, this is in the forecast," or "No, it's not," and we'll adjust accordingly.
I could maybe add at this point, I had talked about, we've been looking at some areas where we feel that we have some additional needs, and I was hoping to be able to talk about that tonight. But really, to do the forecast and to have that all ready by, for the November meeting was not what it was, an aggressive wish that I had. But in December, I will be more prepared. But the first question that, it's also important that the forecast is done before we start looking at staffing, because it has to live within the forecast and not add to it. And also, you should know, we also are always looking at grant funds and, like, other things. Are there things that could be repurposed? Because is there an old initiative that we aren't doing anymore, don't need anymore, and then we can, to reallocate? The needs of students do change quite a bit, and, and the supports that our staff need also can change. And so, December I should be, will be in, in good shape. But it's nice that, that Mr. Smith has the forecast completed, and now we know exactly what we're working on.
The other assumption that I didn't talk about are retirements. I planned for that in here too, because we do see some cost savings. So, if we had, I only planned for two, two retirements this year, we only know one. So, that could impact things a little bit, not tremendously, but a little bit.
Thanks. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I think we have Ms. Abraham has, has a report.
Thank you. Good evening. Well, it's hard to believe that right now, we're actually thinking about creating course handbooks and wrapping up some major curriculum review cycles that we had started last year. So, as such, I have some courses that I'm going to be forwarding to you for approval. Two of them are high school courses. One is a technology applications course. This is actually, of course, that's a more relevant version of our current word processing course. This will allow our students to focus on relevant technology applications. And we also have a STEM engineering course for our high school students, and this would be a replacement of our current Project Lead the Way Intro to Engineering. So, that's just a shift in titles. Then we're also looking at several courses at the middle school level, and many of these have come through as we've been working on our curriculum review cycle. We've been looking at what do we have available to our kids, and we really want to ensure that we have followed all of our proper procedures and policies and seeking your approval for these particular courses. So, there are three music courses, a beginning guitar, a beginning piano, and a music tech course. And those three courses would actually be nine-week electives for our students. There's also a PE plus course, which is a nine-week elective for our eighth-grade students who have a desire to have additional PE beyond what they would typically have in their eighth-grade year. And then the final course is a Discovery VI course, and that is a course that is designed for our superior COG students, and it's a nine-week elective course in the sixth-grade year. Any questions, Marty?
Is the Discovery VI only open to the kids that are designated with superior?
And the, the music classes are more specifically defined, but they're general music requirements for the seventh grade or middle school? So, they would take one of those as their music options at the grade? Yes, so it's really the same, they're just re-titling, repurposing. And those were, were based on student interest, and I, when I talked to Mr. Cottle, he said these were the three, that these were, our students expressed they had interest in furthering their study.
I have a question about the Discovery VI class. I know in elementary schools is typically where we've had our sort of pull-out, sort of reserved class for superior COG, and in elementary, it's superior COG plus gifted in English Language Arts. And traditionally, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I only know the experience of my kids and what I, what I've heard, but traditionally, and once we got to middle school, we serviced gifted students or superior COG students by having differentiated English classes, best of an A, B class, those classes, well. Serving our gifted students, we're also open to other students who could do the work or who could, you know, petition in or give student, teacher recommendations or whatever into that class. And, you know, that, that's sort of the model that then we follow for the rest of our secondary education in terms of having classes that are open to any student who is willing to do the work and take the challenge on. So I'm just, I'm curious about the sort of pedagogy or the philosophy about bringing a sort of gifted, specific class, almost a pull-out, I mean selected, so it's not really a pull-up, but it's similar in nature to, to what we do in elementary school and sort of porting that over to the middle school.
The design in this course, as you had mentioned, the ELA had to end, the past practices they had moved through. And my understanding, because like, I, I live in high.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is that, having reviewed our data, there was an opportunity and a need that we needed to spend more time on writing. So the way they opted to do that was through the ELA course. When they did that, then they looked for other ways, what, what would be an option to address student needs? And as Mr. Cottle worked to design this course, one of the things that he was passionate about is it really helped our superior cognitive kids not just work through inquiry and creativity, which we would say all kids we want to have that, but it also has a special focus on the social emotional side of that learner. And so it was specifically designed with a group of students at the heart of that. They started to pilot a version of that this year, as you're aware. And next year is the implementation into this nine-week elective to see what is the interest of our kids. And again, always looking to see, you know, how do we bring those opportunities to the rest of our kids? But this was really designed with that specific group in mind.
Is the class itself, how often does it meet?
It's a nine-week class next year. Right now, it means once.
Oh, so it means once a week now? And then next year would be every, every day for nine weeks? And for our superior cog students, would we recommend that they take that class continuously through the year to get those services? Or is it really just a?
It would just be a one nine-week option to them.
Okay.
Right, because they have other nine-week elective that, we have other nine-week courses that are required courses.
Yeah, they're sort of taken through the.
Yes.
That is all the executive reports that we have. Now moving on to board reports. The athletic board meets tomorrow, so we have not had an athletic board meeting since the last, since our last board meeting. As far as the OSBA, the Ohio School Board Association conference, I know a lot of us were there and attended some, some sessions and, and I think, I'm not going to get into too much detail, but I was able to attend a few. One was very helpful in regard to board governance, and another one wasn't so helpful. But it was good to go and get perspectives from different, different boards, or different people about how they, how boards are run. And, and that's kind of what I focus on, on doing on behalf of the board. But those are things that we can talk about later, perhaps at a board retreat or something. Other than that, I do not have any additional report. Ms. Snowden?
So BEF is in the midst of their annual fund, so I encourage everybody to support our education foundation, because they do a lot for our students. I also was able to attend some of the OSBA capital conference sessions. And I would like to just give, I'm just, since we have a little bit of time, I'm just going to give you the highlights of the ones that I went to, because they were all good, which is frankly not always the case. So I was pleased to get some really, what I thought was interesting information from, from my sessions. And I can certainly tell you guys more about them as, if you're interested. But I thought I'd just give you the highlights of the ones that I, that I went to. So the first one was OSBA-directed, and it was about building trust among the community administration and the board. And it made me really pleased, and I'm sure would make Dr. Miller very pleased to know that, the first thing they said is that it's, that the most important thing is to align all your actions to your goals. And at board meetings to ask, what is the administration doing to align to those goals? And what is the board doing to further our mission and vision? And how do we monitor, how do we monitor that? And how do we express it in public meetings? So I thought that was an interesting, I was pleased to hear, because I think that's what we're, what we're always working to do. Then the second one I went to was really interesting from a communication company called Pennis Communications. And they're actually, they do crisis management is one of their, oh, well, probably their lead kind of, sorry, what they, what they focus on. And so the, one of the things I thought was interesting is that OSBA has apparently purchased some sort of consultation with this group for all, all OSBA members. So if, and I pass on some of this information to Mr. Trell, who, so he has it. But it's a twenty-four hour, three hundred and sixty-five day, thirty-minute free. Like if something goes wrong, call them and they help, which I think is really an interesting and useful thing. So, but basically what his, the, his little tagline is, because the court of public opinion is always in session. Right, like it's not, he's not worried about litigation as much as he is how we communicate with our public in an open and transparent manner. So what his main thrust was, he, you know, put up an all-bold, was there's four things that are the most important. Tell the truth, tell it first, tell it all, and tell it fast. I thought, well, that's, you know, a very good point. But what he was saying is that in the current day, and I hadn't really thought about this before, but I thought it was interesting that with, there's what he called iterative journalism. So in the old, in the olden days, people were collecting information that took, you know, like you would have an idea as a reporter, and it would, you would go and collect all the facts, and you fact-check them, and then you talk to other people, and then you put it out in the newspaper, and the next day, everybody would read what had happened before. But now, the more contemporary news outlets don't wait to check things with sources. They put the story out, and then you're left to respond to it and respond and respond. And so it's important that you are quick in telling your truth. And he also, I thought it was interesting, he said that they suggest that you don't ever say no comment, because it's your opportunity to say something, even if it's, we're looking into it. It, it's an opportunity to show some, some real communication with your community. So I thought, like, so I thought it was really interesting, and I did forward it on to Mr. Trell. So I'm sure he'll be looking into it. And then I also wanted to thank Sam McMasters. I went to a meeting, or section that she did, I being and supporting students with mental health. She led that with our, one of our attorneys from, that supports our district, and the director of mental health for Brandview, which was really interesting. And our new, one of our new board members, Victoria Powers, was able to attend that with me. That was interesting. And the last one I went to was a group that was led by Patel for Kids, and of which we are a member. And I know Dr. Miller has done a lot of great work and has reported to us regularly on it. It was just interesting to hear other board, so there were six board members, or sorry, superintendents from other districts. So it was interesting to hear their experience with Patel for Kids. And how, really what most of them said, which I thought was, which our experience as well, is that the community is hungry to be engaged in, in their district. These are high-performing schools for the most part. And so they were talking about how they involve their board and, and different board actions that they've taken that we can talk to a little bit more in, in our board retreat and things. But it was, it was really a great session. So that's a little long window, but I thought you guys might benefit from hearing it, because it was.
I'm a little offended by your reference to the olden days, which actually is in most of our lifetimes.
Mine too. Yeah, right, it's rapidly changing, for sure.
Previous years, right?
Previous year.
Previous.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. Mr. Dennis.
Yeah, recordment last week, not much there. We're beginning to go through and craft the policy relative to the new expansion. And so that's just really exciting, with that work so, so long. Envisioned is actually to the point now that we need to create policy around how you can rent those spaces, how much it's going to, how much it's going to cost, and what the security issues are around that. So most of that is, is not pertinent to, to this body, but it's just really exciting that that's going to be a, this sort of brand-new venue in the community for us to use. I imagine we'll end up having, you know, some, some use of it as, as a school district too, just for, you know, award sponsors or something.
Sorry, do they have an idea when they're going to break ground on it? Do they have that set yet or not?
I'm sure they did, they didn't give us a construction update.
Yeah.
I know the last time we talked about it, which was the month before, it was still over budget. And they're trying to, trying to value engineer some, some significant cost, the costs out of it. So. But it does seem like it's all on track and, and ready to go. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to give a heartfelt congratulations to Victoria Powers and Melissa Mitchell on their, on their win in our recent election with all the talk about the levies we sort of haven't talked about yet. The election for two seats on, on the Board of Education. Both them did, you know, obviously great jobs campaigning, really brought a lot of positive energy and, and great ideas to, to the campaign. I had more than one person mention to me as I was campaigning and talking to folks that the school board really had an embarrassment of riches in terms of its candidates this year, that there really was no wrong choice. And I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. I think the board would be well-served by any of the five candidates that were running. I think we got two great ones, so that's, that's, that's good. And, you know, when I originally announced I was, I was running again, I definitely said that, you know, the folks that we were running with, we were running against each other, really running for a seat on this board to make positive impact in our community. And I wholeheartedly believe that. And I think the campaign itself was very positive and was always focused on what we can, A, always focused on passing the levy. That was like number one thing that we always talked about. I was really actually very happy that all five candidates came out very, very much in favor of, of levy. It could definitely have been a situation where our candidate became the sort of candidate of, you know, of no, or don't pass the levy. And that, that wasn't the case. And so I think that, you know, led, you know, whatever little extra bit of momentum to the levy campaign. It was definitely great to have that sort of positive discussion around that issue. And in addition to that, all the ideas were just really about how we could make our school district better and, and take, you know, what's already a great district and just take it to that next level. And I think especially the five of us were really committed in the discussions we had and the discussions we have with voters on how to ensure that the great things and the promises that come with being a Bexley student are really assured for all the students, all of our students, regardless of their ability, race, socioeconomic status. And I think that's a legacy of this campaign I'm really proud of. I'm really proud that the five of us sort of shared that as a value and brought our own perspectives to that. But we're all kind of championing that issue. So I really also wanted to thank Sarah Ackland and April Walsh for running. Again, this is for the five of us, I think, again, you know, really a positive campaign. And, you know, congrats again to Victoria and Melissa and the board. And like I said, will be well-served in the future when, when they take a seat in, in January. So thanks.
Thank you. Ms. LaQua?
I don't have any board reports this month. However, I've been talking for the last few months ad nauseam about the levy, as I serve as the liaison to that committee. And I must say that I'm so proud of that group. They work diligently, they work uniquely. In the olden days, I served on levy committees, and they were run differently. And they did it their way. And in looking, looking at reanalyzing the committee and so forth, it was a group of very young parents, very young people in our community who have taken an early lead, leadership role. And I hope they stick around for a long time, because they have a lot to continue to give to our community. That is to say, we don't want them to leave. And then we have Howard Schottenstein, who was also on the committee with me, and we kind of held up the old guard, you know, a little bit. But.
You're talking about the olden days.
I know, but that's what we're reiterating, the olden days. We sat on many committees before together. And, but the youth on the committee, their commitment, even though they have a long haul ahead of them with their kids still in the school district, we're past all that, so we see the end run of all this. But I truly wanted to thank them for including me in their committee and their work. And I supported them wholeheartedly, because their, their love of the district was genuine and passionate. And so I have nothing but wholehearted thanks to them for all their work. They did take many, many weekends away from their family and friends, as John mentioned. I witnessed that, and faculty did it as well, students, community members, board members. And, and then Kim and Kyle did the yeoman's task of sharing not only the academic information about our district, but also the financial information, so that people could understand what they were voting for and why. And then the committee took that, that information and pushed yes part of it. And so they were both in sync with each other. Their, the result was outstanding, because they were in sync. The message was clear, it was well-planned, it was well-executed by Kim and Kyle representing our district. And so the, the community responded with an overwhelming supportive message to us. And I just have to congratulate everyone, because these things don't happen behind closed doors. They don't happen incidentally. They happen with hard work and dedication. And the whole campaign season, there was a lot going on, but I think the levy committee made their issues stand out. And so I can't say enough, thank you, thank you, thank you. And congratulations. So that's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Minio?
Okay, I'll lean in. So it's pretty hard to follow Melissa up again. You had so many positive things to say, but I do want to say thank you to the Bexley Excellence Committee. You guys did a great job. I want to say thank you to the community. You know, we promise to be, I think I can speak collectively, we promise to be good stewards of your money, and we appreciate your trust. And we really do want to like, we want all the best for our kids. So thank you for that, a lot of trust. The policy committee did not meet, so I don't have a report there. I am the board representative on the mental wellness and trauma safety planning team. We had our first meeting in October. We have, I think, three more to go, it's going to be like a quarterly meeting. That's kind of exciting. We're going to talk about how, how we want to, what, what we want to do to support the mental, the wellness of our kids. I thought it was, I was really excited about the meeting. I think there's just a lot of other, like, little, like, plugs I have to put in there. Because I think, well, I think, okay, so I want to go back up and say, like, it's really, I mean, there's so much talk about like what's been going on with the levy and with the election, that it's easy to kind of like forget that there are so many amazing things that happen every day, like, in school. And I think it's like a good time to like, just pause and say that. I know the teachers had the Bexley Institute on November fifth. And I feel like, having been to like, I couldn't count how many levy conversations, but having been to all of them, that was a recurring theme, is like that our teachers, that we want to support the educators. That's part of where our growth comes from, is making sure that we're always thinking forward. And what did Marla say about, you know, making sure that our goals are in line with our plan? Well, that's what the, that's what the Bexleys, that's what that continuing on day, on election day is all about. So thanks to everybody who made that awesome. I went, just yesterday was at the football banquet, the end-of-season football banquet. So to me, that's the end of fall sports. So I want to say, like, first of all, like, congrats to all our athletes that just finished up fall sports, including the girls' country team. And like cheers to all our students who are participating in winter sports, who tried out and made it, and who tried out and didn't make it, or who are exploring what they want to do with their fall, or their winter sports. I think it's like, I think that transition time is worth being celebrated. And I always say, the things that go on at school that I hear about at home are usually pretty like, that was a pretty high register. And I heard from more than one of my children about the safety drills that have been going on, both at the, I heard, I heard at high school and elementary school level reports on that. So I want to say thank you to Dr. Williams and everybody who kind of got our kids in line. You know, they're practicing, they're thinking about what they can do to be safe in a lot of different situations. And I think that's important to like start from, say thank you for that too. So anyway, those are not reports, those are thanks, yeah. Moving on.
Michelle, can I ask you a question? Can you tell me?
Can you tell me who is on the mental wellness, health and wellness?
Can I tell you? Of course not.
How many people are on here?
I feel like there was at the.
I know you just had one.
Yeah. And at the meeting that I was at, there was, I'd say there was maybe 10 people.
Is it staff and community or? Yes.
Mm-hmm. And it was heavily, I feel like it was a little bit heavier on the community, because in part because it was like a three-hour meeting. She said the one, the future ones are gonna be a little bit closer to two hours, which makes it less on.
Less on, yeah, great.
Yeah. And so, but I know for sure I sat with one of the counselors at the high school, which I couldn't tell you what her name is.
No, I know, I'm always, it's difficult. Especially, I didn't even put you on the spot. I was just kind of trying to process who we were, because I know we've been talking about doing the working groups and I was kind of, kind of categorizing my head who was on, what that looked like.
I can explain. That's part of our work with Grantis Hope, to have a comprehensive plan. Why is this ringing?
Committee's calling.
Not sure why it's ringing, it's off. I apologize. But they provide a list of the types of people that should be serving on that committee and that's, that's how that came about.
Great. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. And Ms. Howson, as Dr. Miller mentioned, is, is ill and homecoming went great. That's the report from student representative. Now, moving on to Agenda Item 5, Public Comment. Mr. Smith, is there anyone?
Yes.
Okay.
I, eh.
Yeah, before I, before I let you speak, Mr. Schottenstein.
Although under state law, the Board of Education is not required to offer public comment time during regular board meetings, we welcome the opportunity to hear from our community members. As such, we encourage your participation within certain parameters. Prior to the start of the meeting, we ask that you sign in the public comment sheet at the podium. When you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes per board policy. And finally, we note that public comment is just that, the public's opportunity to be heard, it is not a Q and A session with the board. We look forward to hearing your comments, but per our board policy, we will not respond to public comment in the meeting or as individual board members. You can be assured that we are actively listening and taking notes for future reference and review. So the first person on the.
You just made that off.
It's all right here.
Just for you.
Our chance.
Well, I'll try to be brief, five minutes brief. I, I, I think everyone's been appreciated who worked on this levy campaign, but I, for sure, looking at this room, know that I've worked on more than anyone else. And just a couple real quick comments, 'cause you were all great and it's, many of it, much of it's been said. But real quickly, no two people, no, no superintendent or, or a school treasurer worked harder on any of the campaigns I've been on than these two people here. Kyle, the Kyle and Kim Show was fantastic. And, and I'm sure you don't want to see another cup of coffee for, for at least months, but you, you did a fantastic job. And then also the new faces of parents and the teachers and volunteers that put out signs and door hangers and worked, that was good to see. But really, I, I was most impressed by the people over here and particularly, see, I get choked up when I mention Ted Cato. For people who had never worked on a school levy before, they did not miss a step. And, and I would, it would, they did a phenomenal job and, and you deserve a tremendous amount of credit for, for winning that levy. And, you know, I look forward to working with them again. Eventually, I'll be having a walker or something. The other thing, if you'll allow me to mention, there's a lot of talk within the community and the last thing I, I do, have ever done or would ever do is to pretend that I know anything about what school administrations and school boards should do. But I am concerned and feel that it is a duty of every, every voter and citizen in Bexley, when they have a concern, that they at least mention it. And here's my concern. And it was brought up to me yesterday in the locker room while I was trying to take a shower in the JCC. So again, and that is, there's been talk about the positions that were never discussed before the levy went on the ballot, additional administration positions. And the rumors are that it's anywhere from three to six. I don't know how many, I'm not even sure of all the positions, but I can tell you from my experience that, I hope you're very cautious about any new positions that go into the school district. Three years is not a very long amount of time. Will be there sooner than, than we think and than we realize. And I don't think there was any question asked to the school levy committee members more, at least to me, about positions that were added to, to the school district. So I ask you to be very careful about adding anything new. And if there's any way to get the work done as much as possible with existing staff, please, I think we'd be wise to try to do it because it will come back to get us in, in the next levy campaign. And I appreciate you letting me mention this. And I feel remiss if I hadn't said anything, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, anyone else on the list?
That is all.
Anyone else for public comment? Thank you. Moving on in our agenda to Item 6, which is our Personnel Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve Items 6A through C?
Ten minutes. Second.
Any questions, discussions about 6A through C on our Personnel Consent Agenda? Hearing nonsense is personnel. Mr. Smith, can you call the roll for approval?
Ms. Snowden.
Yes.
Ms. Minio.
Yes.
Mr. Dennison.
Yes.
Ms. LaQua.
Yes.
Mr. Berman.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on, excuse me, to Item 7, our Business Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve Items 7A through E?
Seven.
Second.
Okay. Do I have any discussion questions, including any questions for Ms. Blasor, who stayed around for the excitement of the board?
Well, since she stayed around, I feel like we should ask you something. I guess I was curious, you're here a few months ago with another trip that you're taking. Obviously, you're, you're, you're busy and you're, you know, obviously getting lots of accolades. How does that trip and these two trips sort of work together in terms of cost for students, in terms of, obviously, it sounds like these aren't, don't require any time out of, at school, so that's fine. I just don't know, like, are these all the same students, so they could potentially be going on three trips and is that like a thousand dollars or, you know, I don't know?
No, the, so the student, two of them are the same. The one that was earlier, when we had the vocal sample members here, that's because they, sort of, I guess, for lack of a better phrasing, they, they won something, right? So they're getting to go and perform on that major performance and that is no cost to them because that's gonna be, I guess, you know, it's a full, it's not an optional field trip because they'll be performing for that if all of them are there. So the Washington DC and Philadelphia trip would also be an opportunity for them because that's sort of bare bones as far as getting to Milwaukee on Monday, performing the next day, coming home the very next day. So it's not really giving them an opportunity to experience the city at all, which is, of course, part of the educational opportunities that we like to provide on trips. So they're doing the DC/Philadelphia trip as something to be able to sing in National Cathedral and do that too, but it's not worth part of them. So, so they would only have cost for one, like a normal experience. And then the other group is a different group of students. Okay. The women's crowd.
Thank you for doing that with them, but I know it's a highlight of every year.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on Items 7A through E?
The only other, I guess, point of discussion, if I have any questions, is I, I understand the, what we're trying, this issue we're trying to solve and address with Discovery 6. I feel uncomfortable about approving a course of study relative to our gifted program without a sense of what, how that impacts the rest of our gifted program. It seems like a, and I, this isn't, it seems like a sort of one-off to try to solve a situation, which I, I understand under the rationale for that situation and I'm sympathetic to that. But I know how much discussion our community's had in the past about gifted services and how we're, how we're addressing those and what that means, just like we have those conversations around special education and other things. And so I feel a little awkward about approving a class. Again, if it was sort of just for this one year to sort of solve this kind of incremental problem, I would feel more comfortable with it. But if this really is gonna become a permanent class moving forward, I would feel more comfortable approving it if I had a better sense of how it fit into any, any other changes that are happening to gifted services, specifically within middle school, but just kind of in general. So other board members may not share that concern, but I just wanted to sort of voice, voice that concern, that's why I asked Ms. Abraham those questions earlier, because I do feel uncomfortable about, about that course.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions about Items 7A through E? It's a voice vote, but I'll, I'll allow Mr. Dennison to vote. So all those in favor of 7A through E, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I guess I'm opposed to 7E, just the Discovery 6. I would approve all the other courses.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
No problem. That's why I wanted to make sure that you were.
I appreciate that. I know it's a little awkward.
No, no.
To say, to account for that.
No, that's why we have a vote, so we can make sure that we do that. No problem at all. Moving on to Item 8A. Do I have a motion to approve Item 8A, which is a number of policies for second reading and approval?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, anything with 8A? I know we've had a lot of feedback and this is our second reading, so I do want to, as always, express my appreciation to Ms. Snowden and Ms. Minio and Dr. Miller on the Policy Committee. I know a lot of these are just legal updates, but I know working on our tobacco policy and our tobacco use policy, I think, it looks like that there was some wording, wording that needed to be adjusted, so I appreciate the work that the committee does. I don't have any other comments about the substance of any of those, but any other questions or concerns?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of, all those in favor of 8A, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you. Moving on to Item 9, Other Matters That May Properly Come Before the Board. Do you have any? The only thing I'm gonna mention under this is that we, we'll talk about, and this is maybe more for public consumption as well, we have, we are likely going to be moving our meetings to Tuesday next school year. Our first meeting will be January 6th, our organizational regular meeting, which is a Monday. I know that we've, we've circulated some possible dates and knowing that City Council is on Tuesday as well, we've looked at their calendar. So those that, of our public that are engaged that come to the meeting, both meetings, or just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of that, that is currently on the board. And I know Ms. Mitchell and Ms. Powers are here and I know they're aware of that as well. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that more for public consumption. Obviously, we can't do anything until January 6th, until the official meeting on that date, but just to make everyone aware of that.
And that we have looked at the dates for City Council and have made an attempt not to conflict with those.
Right. Right. And Ms. Snowden, I appreciate her getting that information from City Council, so.
We should have a mashup, just have one big giant. If anyone has something to say, it's all in one place.
Any other matters that may properly come before the board? Great. Those, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Seven.
Got a lot of those. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you very much.